Let's go ahead and get started. I'm Tim Skoggins, Chair of the Shasberry Select Board. And I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:30 on Monday, September 14th. First item of business is to check with the selectmen. See if anyone has a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening. Art?
Um, there, are we going to be talking about Hawks Avenue?
It is not on the agenda.
Okay, okay, I do not.
Tony?
No.
And I do not either, so we can proceed. Next item is minutes. I don't believe minutes were circulated.
No, I didn't circulate any minutes for the special meeting.
Okay. The next item is warrants, and we have one warrant. It is a check warrant in a total amount of $47,835.72. Looking for a motion to approve.
They're moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Art. Major items on this include 7,200 to Blue Cross Blue Shield, 4,400 to Innovative Surface Solutions, 500 to Mahar Monuments. It says that is for corner markers. I see 10,500 to KAS Inc. That's the, it says that's the spring water testing. I see $600 to that Cofile Technologies, Dave?
Cofile Technologies, yes, that provides recording paper and books for the town clerk.
All right. I've got 8,000 for Morse Repair. Anything special there or just maintenance?
No, that was repairs to Truck Five. Mike and I are reviewing that bill. We're a little unhappy with the size of it, so we'll be having a discussion with them.
7,900, 7,900 to TAM. 1,100 to wholesale distributors. I don't know what that is.
That's fabric and culverts. It's just the dealer.
Okay. 200, 1,000, 1,300 to William E. Daley. And those are the major items. Any other discussion or questions on the warrant? All in favor of proving, approving check warrant number nine, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Art?
Aye.
Okay, no opposed, no abstaining. I think we're the only three. So check warrant number nine. $47,835.72 is approved, 300.
Tim, can I just ask, you said that was the water testing. I just wondered how we're doing. Is this the wells of the wa, or the waters of the residents where we've got the filters in and that sort of stuff? And are we still over the limit?
It's all the fields, Art, and I'd have to go back to the report to check all the limits. We're all within tolerances, though. There's nothing exceptional in this report.
Okay, good to hear.
Does anyone have any announcements? I would remind folks that we have openings on the planning commission in the DRB that we are looking to fill. If you would like to serve the town in that capacity, please let us know. You can send an email or a phone call to town administrator or myself. That would work. Also reminding everyone that the polling place has moved. If you didn't vote in the primary, you may not know that we are now voting at the town garage in order to have more space and practice proper social distancing during voting. By the same token, we encourage everyone to vote by mail. You should be getting from the state. The state has agreed to mail every voter a ballot this year. And so that should be coming in the mail probably pretty soon. You can mail that in or you can bring it to Cole Hall. We currently are taking them just by knocking on the door and handing it to Marlene. If there's no one there, you can put it in the treasurer's lockbox. Any day now, we will have a larger special purpose ballot lockbox out there that you can use. But if you're worried about the post office, by all means, bring it to us directly.
Tim, is the state actually mailing the ballot or just mailing you a request that you send in and then one is sent from the town?
My understanding is they are mailing ballots. Dave, do you have confirmation of that?
I do not. I would have to check with Marlene on that.
Melanie, you're nodding your head.
That is my understanding, going from the state directly, the ballots. Yep.
Yeah. All right, public comments. Does anyone have any public comments? Okay, I promised, we promised that we would have public comments at the beginning and the ending of the meeting. I forgot to include that on the schedule, but without objection, we will provide an opportunity for public comments at the end of the meeting after we review action items. All right, hearing no objections, the schedule is so indicated. The agenda, and that takes us to the treasurer's report. And Melon Dexter.
Hello, everybody. First, before we go to my reports, I wanted to point out that the tax bills are in the mail. You should have received them. I hope everybody has. If they haven't, there may be an issue with your address that we have on record. So just make sure you give me a call and we can, I can email you one or print out another one and mail it to you. It's very important that you get those in your hands. So if you haven't received it, please let me know. The other thing is, please open it and look at it right away and compare it to last year's if you have last year's around. You can almost always answer your own question about why things have changed if you look at your last year and this year side by side. This is the time a couple dozen of you are going to discover that you did not file your homestead declaration. There's still time. It can still be filed through October 15th with a small penalty, but it's really critical that you make sure that you have all of the paperwork in and it's reflected in the tax bill you have. If you need some guidance on how to, what you're looking for on the tax bills, please give me a call. I'm happy to walk you through it. The, the other thing is we're, we're trying to avoid as much as possible any in-person delivery of tax bills. If you require a receipt, just mail me a stamp addressed, a self-addressed stamped envelope with your payment and I will happily send you back a receipt. Or if you can leave an envelope with your payment, if you leave it in my drop box, I will also return it to you. If for some reason you must pay in person, make an appointment with me and I will meet you outside, but trying to avoid having anybody in my office for everybody's protection. Anyway, my phone number is on the tax bill. If you have any questions about anything, please give me a call. I'm working mornings, nine to 12, five days a week, but if you leave a message or an email, I will get back to you very quickly. Okay, so let's look at the reports now. There's, there's kind of a lot going on because of buying the fire truck and also selling a truck. So you'll see a lot of exchange of money here. If you, you look down at, well, first of all, you see you've already gotten $11,000 in taxes. That's people pretty quick off the mark. My, my mom was one of those. She likes to get the gold star every year. But then you see down towards the bottom, we've got sale of fire truck. That's, I guess, an old one. Dave has probably talked to you about that. So that gave us a nice infusion of cash at a really good time of year for us. The, the other thing you see there is the the check that we wrote for the, the new fire truck, that $293, $293,000 came out of the general fund, but had to be, it actually was supposed to come out of the reserve account. So that was just the reserve money being sent back to the general fund. So that's, that's why everything looks so, like a lot of money is going back and forth, but it's really just the, just replenishing the general fund with the reserve account. Is all of that clear? Okay. You want to go down to the bottom there? Tim? Yeah. So you see that our cash balance is nice and healthy because, mostly because of that, the sale of, sale of equipment, the 105 for $104,000 up above. So that leaves us in good shape. I think that since tax bills are out, we're not going to have to do any more draws on the line of credit, I hope. So it looks really, really good for the, getting us into tax season now. Tim, if you wanted to just show the reserve accounts real quick. The September one. I'll just tell you what you're going to see when you see it. The main thing is that the, you'll see the big transfer from the fire truck reserve fund leaves us with a negative balance. Go let's see, where is it? Yeah, okay, that, oops, no, right, right there, the, the third line, the of the, right there, yep. And you see that that leaves us with $54,000. Negative $54,000. That's totally normal. It's totally planned. That's the, the money, the, the voter-approved transfers that we, we get every year. So that'll just get replenished in December, completely expected and normal. But, so you see, that's where the, the purchase of that new fire truck happened. The only other thing going on there is just a little bit of water coming, water payments coming in. Anybody have any questions about any of that?
I have a question for Dave. Was 105,000 the agreed upon price for the truck or was, I was thinking it was 115? Or was that where we started?
115 was the asking price and we settled on 105.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Any other questions about any of this? Okay, I mean, the main thing is, open your tax bill. Don't put it aside to November and read it right away. Find mistakes if there are any. That's all I got.
Thank you, Melanie.
Okay, bye, everybody.
All right, the next item of business is the appointment of rep to the elementary school district board. There's vacancy caused when Tony, the no free O had to resign, and I forgot why he had to resign. Somebody can probably remind me.
I think he moved.
Did he move? Okay.
No, he took a position at the school district level. I think as a maintenance or grounds personnel.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, he took a position with the SU and was recommended that he resign.
Okay, thank you, Scott. So, so the appointing the Shasberry rep to the district board is the responsibility of the Shasberry Select Board. We have three candidates for that position, Jeff Leek, Joan Dornhofer, and Mike Finnick. And we also have with us district board members Scott McInnany and Chris Murphy. And I was hoping that Scott and Chris could fill us in on what we should be thinking when we appoint somebody to this district board and what the, the candidate should be thinking that they are, that they're getting themselves into. So.
So just, I am the other, there's two Shasberry reps for clarity, two Shasberry reps on the SBSU Educational School District Board. I am one of those two. Tony was the other. Chris, as the chair, is here and is willing to speak a little bit about the responsibilities. And I'll turn it, responsible, overall responsibilities and answer any questions. And I can as well as a Shasberry rep. And I'll turn it over to Chris.
Thanks, Scott. So yes, my name is Chris Murphy and I'm the Chair of the SBU ESD. The responsibilities of our board are pretty similar to that of the SBSU, pretty similar to that of the MAU board. And I would say similar to what used to be the Shasberry School District. The shift that has had to occur in the way that we approach that work is now at the elementary school level. Instead of the representative from Shasberry strictly keeping an eye out for the well-being of Shasberry and, and its school, it's coming to think of it as this unified elementary school district. And I think Scott would agree. I think although it's been a learning process, I think the ability of the SBU ESD to think broadly like that, I think we've come quite a long ways in terms of that. I think we've been able to separate ourselves from the old mindset of each person lives in a town and the board members from that town are only concerned with that town and those students and those buildings. I think the SBSU ESD has come a long way in recognizing that we are now a unified elementary school district. And so all the decisions that we make for our students are indeed for all of our students, whether that student is in Bennington or Shasberry or Woodford or Pownell. They are now all of our students and we need to act accordingly. And so I would ask that in your consideration of who you're going to appoint to fill the slot left vacant by Tony, that you keep that in mind, that you keep in mind a person's ability to think beyond the town lines of just Shasberry and come to see, and come to be an inclusive part of the SBU ESD.
Good. Let me open it up then for a moment or two and see if any select board members or school board candidates have questions for Chris or Scott.
A quick question for Chris. Arlington's planning on merging in July of next year, July 1, right? Is that when they're?
Could you, could you repeat that, please?
On the Arlington School Board or Arlington Schools, they're planning coming into the fold next July 1st.
Yeah, Arlington and Sandgate, that's right.
Yeah, because they pushed it back one year because of everything that's happening here. Okay.
If, if I could just ask those that are interested in being a part of the board, I, as a Shasberry resident and as another member of the board, I'd love to hear from each of them as to why, what, what, what things might they like to share with us as to why they, why they would be interested to be a part of the board? And any other things about them as to why they may be qualified or, you know, what their overall thoughts are.
Well, I was going to, yes, ask each of them that question next on the agenda, so.
Sorry.
I can start with Mike Finnick, just because he's at the top of my screen. So my question, Mike, is why do you want to be on the school district board and why should we pick you?
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak to that. My reason is that first of all, you'll probably gather by now, I'm an immigrant. And this is obviously a new country. I've been mixed up and involved in education for quite some time now. Most of my working life, in fact. And in three countries, this country in Australia and Vermont and England. And I'm reasonably qualified and also been involved in England in the local, as a governor of the local school. And I found that a very rewarding occupation and I, it was also enabled me to make a contribution to the local society and Shasberry and the local area in general. And bringing an open mind, a lot of experience, but also an open mind to look at whatever the questions are that arise and working with the local more experienced members of committee to try and address them and solve them. You, you alluded to the fact that we now have a unified school district and we need to look beyond Shasberry. One of the things that I've been thinking for some time now that it is, the impression I have and is that it's, education in Vermont has been very parish pump and important though that is, I can't help feeling that there could be other solutions to problems as well. So and I say, you know, it allowed me to make a contribution. Which is, I felt sadly lacking on my part. I should be more involved and I'd like to get involved. Is anybody got any questions about that?
Art or Tony, do you have questions for Mike?
I'm all set for now.
No, none.
All right, well, we'll go next to Jeff Leek, just going, going clockwise around my screen. Jeff, I would ask you the same question. Why do you want to be on the school district board and why should we pick you?
Um, firstly, I do have a daughter in the district, so I have personal vested interests because now I have a child within the school district here in Shasberry. You know, I've served prior on this Shasberry School Board for two terms. I had to step down halfway through my second term to a change of address. You know, I helped as advice, I was on the Act 46 Committee trying to get the merger passed at the time, I think I was vice chair. So we worked through the process of really, you know, what's going to work best for all the children of Bennington because it would be a one district. You know, elementary school district. You know, and kind of watching what they've done this year with, you know, putting things in place and seeing how the different schools are trying to use up their pre-existing funds to, you know, make the renovations of the buildings. And we do have some classes that are pretty large at some schools and trying to figure out how to shift those students from school to school. So I think it's pretty important to look at the overall education in Bennington as well as the overall education in Vermont. You know, Dan French last year, when the NEEP scores came out for reading, you know, they're pretty, you know, I hate to say they're horrific, but they're concerning. You know, when you have a state where one-third of the kids are reading below basic level in the fourth grade, you know, that's something I think the district, we have to address at a district level. And I know the school board has put an initiative in last year to really look at literacy with across the district and trying to get in place to bring up these scores because I think as a community, we can't have children who are not able to read. You know, trauma is something we can, you know, work towards with, you know, counseling, therapy, if you can't read or have the basic skills to function in society, then you're really looking at a child, young adult, or a person who's probably never went to read at level. And that's what most of us do. You know, if you can't read, you're behind. So I think it's really important to kind of, you know, work on this at the elementary level when most of the reading development needs to take place. And, you know, make sure the district is giving these kids these life skills to succeed in life. Like I said, I've sat on the board before, so, you know, we did the ventilation system in Shasberry due to, you know, some air quality issues. And moving forward at the, you know, across the district, you know, these are going to come up now, especially in the world of COVID, where you need good fresh air in the buildings. And there are some schools that don't have fresh air or good circulation systems. So there's lots of moving pieces with, you know, the COVID and what it looks like at the state funding and how we're going to deal with that at the local level. And you have lost the students in the area, which really impact the cost for people, you know, spending, but really drives funding from the state level. So there's a lot of moving pieces this year and I think it's important to kind of be engaged in the community and really look at the education of our children because you need a good, solid education for your kids for them all succeed. Any other questions?
Yeah, this is our women. I have one. You said you were on the board but had to leave because of a change of address. Are you moving back in or is that not, or is the address not necessary now?
The change of address is, for us, I have a child with severe dyslexia and part of the decoding dyslexia group that I'm part of in the state of Vermont. Me and my wife had to make a change for services. We tried another school because in the state, there are no state laws in dyslexia. It's only covered by the federal law. We're one of the seven states without any law. So small groups are working on that. So we moved to Manchester to get the services that were recommended by specialists that the district couldn't provide. Due to some anxiety issues with my kid, we were able to, you know, maintain the two houses and we came back because from her emotional need, you know, being in Shas is what she knows as home is Shasberry. So we, you know, in this, and we end up supplementing my child's education with to make sure she gets the reading services that she deserved. And I think that's, last year, Roy put forward that literacy initiative, partly because of the state and, you know, realizing you can't have a third or fourth graders not reading at a basic level because 72% of those kids are never getting grade low by the time they graduate. So, you know, we came back, you know, because this is what my kid loves. This is her school and, you know, you can't change where they want to be to school. And that's why.
Okay, well, thank you. I just wanted to know if you did move back or did?
No, I kept the same house. I paid two mortgages for a year.
God bless you for that.
It wasn't pretty.
All right, Joan Dornhofer, welcome. Am I saying your name right?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
So, question, why, why do you want to be on the board and why should we pick you?
I was intrigued when I saw the ad pop up on front page forum, front page forum, porch forum. And as a licensed clinical social worker with 40 years' experience working with kids and their families in hospitals and in schools, I, I, when I saw that, I said to myself, oh, I could do this. I am a really strong advocate for kids and families. I'm a, I'm a good listener. I'm an ethical licensed professional. I am a good collaborator. I am good in being transparent in communications. I am I agree with Jeff about the needs for literacy and really addressing kids' skills, basic skills, as well as social skills and giving them a really positive sense of self that they can want to learn. But I understand too that serving as a board member, one is also an advocate for the system, the whole, the whole school system, not just the kids. It's also the teachers' needs and working with budgetary issues. When I was, in the eighties and nineties, I was a lead social worker at Mount Sinai Medical Center in Manhattan where I managed a very large grant, had to hire other professionals and balance my budget, if you will. So, you know, I understand the pushes and pulls of good ethical work. And I want to get back to my community. I guess I'm new to Shasberry. I've been here four years. And I am, I am interested in, in playing a part.
Okay, any other questions or comments before we move on? Okay, our intention is to meet an executive session at the end of this meeting to discuss the appointment. I would recommend that we, we announce the appointment at the next meeting, which is a week from today. And during that week, I will communicate with, there are other board members, Joe, Barbara and Ken Harrington get their input and also let them know what our and get their input and also let them know what our our three opinions are on the subject. Sound good?
Great, thank you.
Very good. Well, thank you to our three candidates. It's very, very good thing that we have this kind of participation and desire to get involved here in Shasberry. And thanks to Chris and Scott for guiding us through this process.
Very good. Good luck with your selection. And thank you to the three of you as well for being interested in serving this way. Thank you.
Yes, all I know that it's it's nice to see three people.
Thank you.
It's it's too often that these seats go. Moving on, the next item is a housekeeping business item that we have overlooked. Chris Williams, the chair of our planning commission, was due for reappointment in March and we did not do that. So we need to to do that now. We would be appointing him to a three year position. I think we all know Chris and know that he has continued to serve even in the even though he hasn't technically been appointed. So to take care of that, I'd be looking for a motion to appoint Chris Williams to the planning commission.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Art. Any discussion? All in favor of appointing Chris Williams to the planning commission, say aye.
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 Aye. All right, so Chris Williams is appointed to the planning commission for a three year term by a vote of 300. And that takes us to item 10, which is DPW report and our town administrator, David Kirin.
Okay, for the next couple of weeks, the roadside mowing, our rental tractor has arrived and we'll be mowing all on all roads today. It started on Perrin Road. Grading is starting for the season coming up. Most of the roads on the west side are done and they'll be starting on the east side this week. And of course, it's all weather dependent. A tree and ditching project is taking place at the end of Rod and Gun Club Road by the Madison property. They'll be mulching all the new ditches that have been put in. There's two culvert replacements that we're going to do before the end of the season. One in East Road by Glastonbury and one on Maple Hill Road by the Alderbergs. We've also got a undercoating equipment for the trucks. So they'll be undercoating the trucks for the winter time. And then basically just routine maintenance on the vehicles. There are no big projects going on. We still haven't heard anything from the state grants, which was expected. And for the next meeting, we will be talking about a potential purchase of a mower. I wanted to save that for a regular meeting.
All right, any questions or comments on the roads?
Hey, Tim. Tim, this is Scott McInnany. Is there is there is there opportunity for public to ask questions or or is that time already passed?
We normally limit that, but I'm willing to make an exception in this case. You may make a comment.
I was just, I I heard culverts and I I know that in other towns within the state of Vermont and regions across New England, many culverts are being replaced by what they call live bottom culverts where or something similar where allows for fish passage upstream where where the typical metal tube does not. And in some cases, there's funding from TU and other organizations that that are looking to expand the the way trout can travel up and downstream. And I was curious if the town of Shasberry has looked into any of those throughout the process of replacing culverts both now and into the future.
The culverts that I was referring to here are just standard crossroad culverts. They have nothing to do with streams or anything. But a good example, what you're talking about is the culvert we're going to be replacing up in the hollow by the Hideaway, which construction will be in January. And we've worked with A and R and other estate agencies to make sure the passage of fish was a big discussion in it and how wide it had to be and how it could be constructed.
Great, thank you. All right, that takes us to other business. Dave, do you have anything else?
Yes, while we were while you were doing interviews, we were notified that we did receive the digitation, the Act 137 digitization of land records grant. We were given extra funds, so we're receiving $25,891. So that's virtually everything I asked for. So we'll be digitizing all the town land records. So that's a good deal.
Very good. And does memory serve that that was COVID relief grant?
Yes, it's part of part of all of that, the CARES Act.
Okay, okay.
Does that mean that will we still be keeping the land records here or just the digital records will be stored someplace else? How does that work, Dave?
We will still have our permanent records. This is just all backup and for the whole purposes that people can access in a time like this or just on a routine matter now, people can just log in and research the records.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
I see that our state representative, David Durfee, is on the line. David, did you have something to share with us?
Hi, Tim. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yep. Hi, everybody. Good evening. Thank you for recognizing me. No, I just wanted to sit in and I was curious to see whether there were where there's interest in the school board opening. And pleased to see that as as you all were. And so I'll just sit quietly back and listen. Thanks.
All right. Reviewing action items, the only one that I remember that I wrote down was that I was going to talk to that I will talk to the other two board members and let them know our thinking on appointment to the school district board. Did anybody catch anything else that we promised to do? In that case, as promised, I would open it up to public comments on anything that the public might want to comment that they heard this evening.
I have a question on the digitizing of records. How far back is is that plan to go?
We plan to go back initially, I believe it's 10 years. And because I'm doing this at home, I don't have a document in front of me. But we'll go back as far as the money takes us is basically the intent here.
And remind me the amount to the grant?
It was $25,000. So I have to log into my phone every time, $25,891 and 55 cents.
All right. Well, in that case, it is time for us to move into executive session. I would be looking for a motion to do so to discuss appointment to the school district board.
I moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Looking by Art. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we're going to move into executive session now and I'm going to ask everyone but myself, Tony, Art, and Dave to sign off. I would also mention that Scott and Chris, although I saw I was not quick enough there. And I would invite David Durfee as a member of the board also. But this really is a question for the the board members. Do we think we need any other guidance in executive session? Are we ready to discuss it in private? I only mentioned that because I say Chris Murphy offered that they would be willing to go into executive session with us if we so desire.
No.
I don't I don't see the necessity of it. I'm okay.
Okay, well, I think I thank you both for the offer and we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good night.
Take care.